All right. Welcome to the board meeting for the 11th, 2024. Call the meeting to order at 6:37. All trustees are in attendance except for Kent Hinkle and Linda Stutey. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments and input. Looks like there's no one here, so we are good. Consent the agenda in minutes from the March 14th, 2024. Or, yeah, I'm trying to figure out what it is. From March 14th, 2024, the first.
Make the motion to send the agenda. The minutes from pre-14, 2024?
First by Johnson, second by, oh, second. Second by Stein. Discussion? All in favor? And, yes, I do want to amend the agenda for this evening by adding the painting. We have a painting bit that I'd like to add on to for tonight's agenda. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, so pass. We have a presentation this evening by Gordon J. Meyer and company who presents the completed 2023 village audit. Julie?
Okay. And I have these for you. Thank you. I'll pass these out. The first thing I'm just going to cover with you guys is what's called the opinion letter that's in the audit. So that's right after the table of contents. It looks a little bit like this. So I just like to do that first. They've changed the format a couple of years ago, so now you've seen this for a couple of years. And it basically gets into the opinion right away, so you don't have to dig for it later in the letter. And it's just letting you know that we, you know, obviously we audit these, but that they are presented fairly in all material respects and the presentation would be app. So you're good, you have a clear opinion, in other words. And then it gets into the basis. Obviously, we're following generally accepted auditing standards to perform these, and we're doing it against general accepted accounting principles. So then, from there, it talks about management's responsibility, which is the fact that you have to set up a system of controls to capture things in terms of risks, errors, whatever it may be, at the bottom of this. And then the next page gets into a little bit more about what our responsibilities are as auditors. So then it's letting you know on page two here that it's our responsibility as auditors to exercise judgment when we're looking at these. We have to look at the risks that are associated with these financial statements. We have to look at the internal controls. We look at the accounting policies. And then we're making judgments on these financial statements. And there is supplementary information in these. That's the last paragraph, and that's the budget to actuals in the back. So then, the next thing is what's called M D and A. So this is just a little bit of a narrative version if you don't like reading a lot of numbers or financials in general. This kind of tells you the purpose of the financial statements, and it gives you summarized numbers. So the nice thing in the beginning is it just gives you a couple of financial highlights, letting you know that the village's net position increased $138,584. That increase was used to do road construction and other improvements for the village. And I think the easiest thing to kind of, when you get past this, you'll see there's the narratives on page four for describing the statements, the summarized ones on five and six. And then there's a little bit of information on the debt that happens and the capital assets on page eight. And then it gets to the bottom of, I just like to point this one out at eight, where it's talking about the next year's levy and showing, you know, the difference and stuff. So the last, then, from there, this is what I want to point out. So when you get to page nine, and I like to do this because I think it's the easiest way to do it. So pages nine and 10, when you're looking at them, those two pages are what I would call like statements if you were trying to look at things from the for-profit world's view. Right? The for-profit world actually capitalizes all of its assets and depreciates things. It posts its liability on its, what's called, balance sheet so you can see how much debt they have with all people. So that's what this set of statements does. These were, these came around now, like 15 years ago now or something, because before that, it was the sets of statement after this, which is called the fund balance style. And the reason they did this is because when you look at the second set after this, you can see how much more stripped down, right? So if you're comparing page nine to page 11, look at how much less is between the two pages. You can't see a total listing of all the capital assets. You can't see the debt over here, right? And that's because, you know, for years and years and years, it was the other style, but then they were kind of realizing, well, governments, you know, if a citizen or whoever, board member, wanted to see, gee, it was a little trickier to find out how much you owed. And then they weren't really tracking their whole capital asset picture. And if you think about anyone, even if you was a village, your capital asset picture isn't just these buildings. You have to take care of all these roads, right? So there's a bigger picture there. And so having the assets on here, you get a bigger sense of some of these things. So that's the difference between the two. So when you're looking at them, obviously, the page 10 is the income side, where that's everything coming in the door and going out the door for the village throughout that stretch of timeframe. That one we were on before is just a snapshot, right on December 31st. How much did you have in cash? How much did you have in assets? So when you look at page 10, the opposing one on the fund balance side is on page 12. So you can see the presentation is dramatically different, right? The one on page 10, they start with expenses. And then what it does is it takes away what's considered charges for services to show you what's left, and then gives you a sense of what you're bringing in, as they call it, general revenue. How much tax dollars are you bringing in to help cover those general expenses that the charges for services don't cover? So it does a little bit of a backwards approach. But what you're not going to see in here, what you're used to when you budget, is if you do a paving project, for instance, that's big enough and it has to be capitalized into those capital assets, it's not going to be in here as an expense on this style of presentation on 10. But when you go over to 12, that's where you're going to see capital outlay. So that's where you see, you have capital outlay of $135,000 that happened in 2023. And then the other difference is you're not going to see, when you're looking at 12, you see principal. You made $145,000 in principal payments. So that gets presented as an expense when you're looking at things from a fund balance style, which is how you budget. But when you go over to this set of statements, you're not going to see that as an expense. It just reduces the debt on the balance sheet, in essence, is the for-profit word or statement position for you guys. So I just like to point that out because sometimes it's a little bit confusing, why do we have two sets of statements? And I kind of know why you have two sets of statements. I don't write the standards. I make sure that you guys are just presenting like you should and tracking all the things that you have to when we're coming out to measure and test. So from there, the nice thing is page 13 and 14 give you a little bit of a reconciliation between the two sets of statements so you can kind of see the components that are going into those adjustments between them. And it's like we talked about. You can see on 12, it's the capital assets. You know, there's liabilities that are being posted. And then when you look at page 14, it's going to be things like the depreciation expense or it's going to be, you know, the principal payments like we just talked about, right? And then page 15 is your fiduciary fund. As a government entity, you're busy collecting taxes, and then some of those taxes go off to gateway. You don't get to keep them all. So the picture on 15 just tells you that the total statement in taxes for you was $1,030,000. And of that, you were busy collecting, and you collected $436,000 by December 31st, that marker. I mean, obviously, you continued to collect, and you did your settlement in January and February. But as that marker, you had collected almost half of what you had assessed. So then 16 is your footnote. It just talks about the fact that the village of Elmwood formed in June, on June 27th, 1960. And it talks about the fact that you're tracking your asset classifications, which is what they're listing below your equity in essence. And then 17 goes on to talk about the fact that there's, you know, different types, restricted, committed, and your financial reporting entity that you, in this case, you don't have any component units, but it discloses the fact that you're aware that, you know, there could be that impact. 18 goes on to talk about the fact that you have your fund balances. That's a whole other presentation, the fund balance styles. And for you, you're largely the general fund and the fiduciary fund that we talked about. The next page, page 19, just talks a little bit about how do you measure things? How do you record revenue when you record it in expenses? What's considered a deferred outflow? And how do you budget as a village? And it goes on 30 to continue to talk about more of these basic concepts. You know, what do you consider cash and investments? And for you guys, when you talk about investments, you're largely just trying to follow state statutes, making sure that you're complying with, that your investments are just in line with whatever's allowed under state statutes. And then it talks about the property tax cycle and how the property tax cycle works. And then it goes on to 21, talking about a few more things, like your capital assets. And you can see at the bottom of the lives that are used to depreciate when you were looking at the one where it was all on the statement of financial position. And 22 talks about custodial risk. And that's just in terms of like, what kind of cash should you have? And was any of it uninsured? So the good news for you is that you had $470,000 in cash, but between, because you're a municipality, you don't get just the 250 that the FDIC gives you. You also get the state coverage, which is kind of nice. You get a little bit of extra coverage. So with that extra coverage from the state, you had zero that was uninsured and uncollateralized, which is kind of a relief for you because that was a big topic in the past years. They watched some of the banks and worried, you know, what about our balances? But you guys had everything insured and covered. So that was good news for you. And then carries on to 23, with just more of a detailed analysis and showing that you had $169,000 of expenditures that qualified for capitalization. There was an additional $74,000 taken in depreciation. The inter-fund balances are largely that agency fund is collecting taxes, and then it owes its share over to you, the village and the general fund. So that's that liability between those two funds. And 24 is your debt. I always like to show that page just because sometimes people ask, you know, well, how much do we have left? And what does it all do? And so you can kind of get an idea here in terms of what's out there, what the maturity is and when the maturity occurs and the various payment streams. So you can see how much it's going to be owed for 24 and down to what's going to be owed between 2034 and 2038. Page 25 is that whole new leasing standard. If you remember, there was a lot of stuff with the new leasing standards that are applicable now. So there's a whole new footnote with regards to some of that and how much is principal and how much is interest. And that all plays into that first one I showed you that had all the capital assets on, not the budgeting style we do, but the other presentation. And then it gets into your supplementary. So this is probably the one you're most comfortable with, most used to, because it's how you budget. So this is your budget to actuals, actually, even, showing you that the final, the original budget, the final budget, and then comparing it to actual and giving you the variance. And then you also can get the 2024 budget number. So the good news is you were over, right? Because you budgeted on revenue $567,900, and you collected $607,385. So you were over budgeted on the revenue side. And then the expenditures, there were some shifts in some cases. It looks like maybe you just hadn't quite budgeted certain items. So you can keep that in mind as you look at it for, you know, if you need to do any amendments for the budget that you might have now in case it might not be captured, right? And then it gets down to the difference at the end, so. And that is your financial statements. So any questions on them?
The village is good.
Yes.
So it's green flags and red flags?
No. No. Yeah, and one other thing people look at, and maybe I can just point that one out too, that, back to your healthy thing. Page 11, that's where you're seeing all the fun stuff. So there's where you can see there's $439,747. And again, that's just that capture date right on December 31st. But the good news is what it's saying to you is you do have a little bit of cash reserve should something happen. So all of a sudden, if you have a crazy winter next year and suddenly you have to buy more salt than you ever anticipated, you're going to have a little bit of cash reserves, so, which is good. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
So I need to get your signature on this. And that's just the letter saying that she gave us all the information what she gave us, the minutes, and told us, you know, everything that's going on. And then this letter is for me and you guys, which I'll give to her to keep. And basically, you guys don't really have any funding sources. That's where I see these being requested once in a while when people have some of the government funds that are coming in or state funds coming in. But it just says that there were no difficulties in common, no disagreements, you know, we didn't have to seek any outside parties. So it's just a good luck. Okay.
Thanks, Julie.
How much do you think? Um, yeah, you know, it's funny. It's right in that highlight footnote thing. I think that's where we put it actually for you because I thought somebody might ask that question. So we put it in the highlights. I think it's in the highlights. See that that is a budget. Yeah, rental income was budgeted at $227,000, and the actual was $226,000. So that was really great for you guys. So this was due to more, you know, tenants making rent payments and, yeah, all that.
I bet that, it's the hall that Jim even, are they connected? I mean.
I guess they are. Isn't that total rent?
Is it the hall, is the hall and the room? Yeah, like all, is that right?
Yep. All right. So usually, I think you guys make a motion just to accept the audit as presented. So it's kind of documented that you can kind of review it. So everyone wants to be, oh, I said, usually you guys make a motion to accept the audit. It's such a phrase, like, you know, we accept the audit as presented.
Yep. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the audit from Gordon J. Meyer and company, presented by Julie Craig.
To accept the budget from Gordon J. Meyer, as presented by Julie Craig.
For my second?
2022.
First by Ruth, second by Johnson. All in favor? Opposed? Discussion, I forgot to ask? Okay, I said it, so pass. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations. Julie's going to be a grandma.
I know, I was going to tell her because I didn't know you, but you might know because of Facebook these days, right? Yeah, yeah, no, it's kind of wild. My daughter's pregnant, she's due in September, so.
I taught both her daughters.
Yes. Is that wild? So she had my daughter, yes.
Wow. How's your daughter feeling?
She's doing good, yeah. I mean, she obviously says to me, she goes, well, I'd feel much better if I wasn't pregnant than I'm pregnant. I said, well, come on, I'm sure you don't want to not be pregnant.
No, no, I know, but I feel nauseous every day.
Yeah.
I'm like, wow, welcome to that.
Right, exactly, I know.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
She's a little boy, a little girl.
She won't, she doesn't know, she doesn't want to know. She's not going to tell anybody.
Very excited.
Yeah, because I said, are we going to do the gender reveal?
No, we're just going to keep it simple, baby. Oh, well, this is my life, real surprises. I mean, it's one of them. But sometimes it's nice to stay out of those challenges.
So I'll tell you, you said hi.
Yes, you're happy for me.
She still knows who you are.
Oh, yes, yes, we're friends on Facebook, guys.
Yes. Thanks, guys. Happy new year.
Okay, next on the agenda is the administration of the oath of office for Kelly Stein. And Brian Johnson, Linda, I guess we'll have to.
Yeah.
Congratulations. You get to be trustee even over two years. I will let you guys read these so you don't have to guess what I'm saying.
Oh, thank you.
And when it's supposed to be your name, just go ahead and say it on the name.
Okay.
Can I say your name?
So go ahead and stand up. And I.
Brian Johnson.
I, having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Oh, having been elected or appointed, or have been elected to the office of village trustee.
But have not yet entered upon.
But have not yet entered upon.
The duties thereof.
The duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
Will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
We're not going to sing together.
No, no. For Julie, your time.
Come on. Anything else, or is that it?
Done, done. Thank you. Okay. Sheriff is not here at the moment, so I want to. So we'll move on to my report. Okay, there's a few things to fill you in on Building 2. First of all, harmonious beginnings, their lease is up at the end of May. Typically, they, you're supposed to come in 90 days before. You sign the lease. And I don't know if everybody realizes that, that we have not seen from you. So we kind of just play, we're playing home tag with her a little bit. But we did, I did talk to Rebecca in October about sound being too loud for the spa. It's, I think everybody knows what harmonious beginnings does as a business. They're, they're working with children with special needs, and it's music therapy, and it just does not fit next to a spa. Shelley has a much longer lease, and it's just been really hard. And I did ask for song grouping in October, and she followed through with a few things, but not enough, that it was like a blanket and a.
Room divider.
Yeah, room divider, and maybe a carpet on the floor. And it really didn't do much. But she didn't hear anything, and I wasn't going to necessarily come after and say, no, that's not good, you know, like, she didn't even communicate with me. I just happened to see what she had done. So we gave it some time, and Shelley came back and just said, it's still really loud. The church, obviously, also was pretty loud sometimes. And so, talking a few weeks ago, during my spring break, I was in the office with Kendall and Tira and just said, I just don't think this is working. I would say Building 2 takes up a ton of our time. And it's just, it's constantly micromanaging who's doing what. And I was going to have a meeting with all of them. She never got back to me about having a meeting with her. I wanted to sit down, all of us, Shelley and Lisa and the bishop. And not everyone ever got back to me at times. And I was kind of threw my hands up and said, that's, we're just done. So we gave her some options. She got a letter this week. Have you heard from her this week?
No.
She got a letter this week that basically, we, it was on the door as well. We mailed it to her house. So she definitely knew, or, well, now she knows. And I'm glad to hear that she's not upset. But we did give her the option to use this space if she wanted to because she's only here in the evenings, from like 4:30 to 7:00. And it's, sometimes it's her, and sometimes it's her partner. But we haven't heard anything, and we just don't know if she'll fall through. It would have to be, there have to be times that we'd have to adjust, for instance, when we have board meetings or if this falls rented out. So we're just wait and see. But I did feel like it was in the best interest of Building 2 to just not continue with that lease. I know that she was at the home before this, and she was asked to leave because of the noise as well. So it's just what it is. And I, she was a lovely tenant, but it just, I, if I had been president and she had asked, I probably not, would not have approved music therapy next to his bra. It's not that hard to understand.
Not a good fit.
It's like a music room next to a library, like. So the other part of Building 2 is kind of an interesting story. So the bishop was over there. Yolanda, his sister, was the VC on Easter Sunday. There was a, I was on my way to Oklahoma with my family, and Sherry had the spa, the head of the spa had called, or she emailed me, and I happened to see it. And I called her right away, and there was an altercation, like there was some sort of disruption at the service. People came in, there was a lot of shouting. I got, she, her girls at the spa recorded it, and she sent me both. They called 911, they were very scared. They were, they're pretty young over there, in their early twenties. And Shelley was not on the premises at the time. The police came, someone was taking away an ambulance, somebody was arrested. I was very upset. Obviously, I did not bother Mark Kingston, our lawyer, on Easter Sunday. And I felt bad for them because it was their church service, and it was Easter Sunday. So I know the bishop, it was somebody from outside of their organization, doesn't matter. So that was pretty tragic. And there was, we were just going to start taking notes of maybe not renewing their lease come October because their lease was up in October. Well, then Kendall called me, I think, on Wednesday, and we found, he had not paid his rent. And he was already like three days late with his rent. And he said he was going to drop off $500. And please remember that Yolanda was on the lease. The church isn't on the lease, and he's not on the lease, Yolanda is. We found out on Wednesday morning that Yolanda died of a massive heart attack. So therefore, it was kind of cut and dry that the lease is no longer. She, the lease has been terminated. He did not pay his rent for March. He has a security deposit, which Kendall, correct me if I'm wrong, the security deposit would cover the March rent.
Yeah, just March, we're still on April.
I don't think we asked him for April. He's out April 3rd. He hasn't, unless he has church services in that building, I would like to just say, you're done. We're not asking you for any more money. I just feel like that's a, you know, we know, I don't think he has the money to pay April. And even though he's here until April 30, I do not feel comfortable with saying, you also owe us for April, when he has lost his sister, his son is the one that was taken away in an ambulance, and I know he does not have the money. She was the financial person. Now, if I'm not ruled, please say something. I just, I do not have the heart to go out with this man and say, you owe $900, when he cannot run, he's not doing any church services of that building for all of April. He has until April 30 if he gets stuff out. If you disagree. Does anyone disagree? I mean, I know we're out $900, and he can't rent it, but I don't think we'd be renting it before April 30 anyways.
If he doesn't have any services, if he does have services.
Then that would be a different story.
Different.
Correct. Correct. Yes. But we, he is, he is clear that he has gotten a letter from us. It was also on his door. It was mailed to him. It was emailed to him. He knows that he is no longer, um, able to have services there, that his lease has been terminated because his sister died. Um, I do think it's a pretty sad situation. Just two whammies right in a row, um, tragic things happen. And so I'm just feeling that I'm not gonna pressure him to be like, you also owe us nine hundred dollars.
Right.
Um, yeah, so, um, and I'm, I, I guarantee he probably does not have the money to pay it. Um, so why kick him ways down? Um, is there, my other note was, um, so Shelley has been concerned and so has the other church in building four. Um, they've been really good tenants and when Chris was in office, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that we had talked about this three percent increase. Well, Shelley has brought to our attention, if she gets increased every year for three, you know, and she's there, she's not gonna be able to make rent. Because it will just go up and up and up. And we're trying to figure out a way to cap that at a certain point. Or not make it three percent for somebody who is a long tenant such as Shelley and such as, uh, the church over here. I forget the name of that church.
Alicia.
Yeah, Alicia, but yeah. Um, so that's something that we're working on right now. I don't really need, you know, if you have anything you wanna share, but. We've been talking, the three of us about, we just don't think it's, it's fair to keep increasing rent for people that have been here for a long time. The first year, their year, then yes, the second year it would increase, maybe by the third year, and then we kind of cap it after a while. Um, so we're in talks of that. And is there anything else you wanna say?
Yeah, so I'm gonna do places for about three tenants and everyone was like, no, on that. I don't, I just want to do a year. Like, um, the therapist in building one, she had a two-year lease, but she was like, could you just make it one year? We got around like three percent. And then the church didn't really like it, like no one liked the three percent. And then Shelley was supposed to sign her lease and she's like, ooh, I just don't like the three percent.
I don't wanna lose people because of that increase. Um, I do think we, you know, things go up, you have to increase some. Maybe it's too high of a percentage.
I think it maybe is a, you know, for the first year, okay, after the second year it goes up and then every, you know, it's revisited officially every two years, every three years, something along those lines. Because we don't, I mean, inflation's a thing.
Right.
And ignore that.
Agreed.
Inflation's a thing.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, I agree. We don't wanna, you know, sort of price people out of, out of their spaces either, especially if they've been.
Really good tenants.
Yeah, really good tenants. So there's, yeah, I think there's some.
The church over here's been fantastic. Shelley's been fantastic. All the people in building one are fantastic. And I feel like we got, we have now taken care of and I hope that that.
Yeah.
And my hope is that Shelley can also lease the rest of that building, but she said she can't do it this year. It has to be maybe sometime next year. And so if we do find anything, they will be quiet business. Quiet keyword. Um, but that was a big, um, issue. So please, you know, just it's not really up for, it can be for discussion, but we're not voting on anything. I just wanted to bring that to our attention. Cause we're trying to decide what that's gonna look like. Um, the last thing I wanna talk about, she's gonna talk about a different issue with the house. But, um, Greg Tallick, who lives, he was our neighbor that was going to build the bird, the, I keep saying birdhouses, the little libraries. Um, Forrest, who, wonderful man, um, and has been a village resident for a very long time. He is having an issue with molds in his house, um, and now has plywood on his two front windows.
That's what I asked about that one.
Yeah.
That's a good one.
And what did Greg say? Fill us in.
Um, he was very upset about the, the roof. He said, we already came, we got a permit, you know, with the guy's roof down and it's leaking and so, and then his wife.
Well, that's not our fault.
Yeah, and then his wife got on the phone. She said he was kinda ill, so I didn't know if there was something else going on, but, um. They just had to send a letter with the ordinance and they want to review it.
Yeah.
So I've been doing that.
Okay, good.
So I wrote a letter to Greg saying he has thirty days in which to like fix this problem. He cannot just keep plywood on his windows.
Um, I really do, they're very nice people, but they also will take, I asked Greg to build the little libraries. And he was, he's been sick. He's been ill. He's gotta get work done some other way. He can't do it himself. And I, I don't know how the plywood is helping, um, but I.
The plywood was painted to match the house and it looked like.
I, I, I don't, I don't even know. And he will just take a really long time to get this project done. And so I, I anticipate like if we don't give him a letter, we could be going into winter with the same situation, um, considering.
Technically, um, per building code, you'd have to have some type of escape.
I was gonna say with a fire.
So it wouldn't be up to code.
Yeah.
It needs to be fixed.
So I basically gave him thirty days and said, you have thirty days in which to fix this problem. Like, you've gotta figure it out. Like, it's not our fault if the roof is leaking.
It's a fire hazard.
Whoever you hire, like that's, just because you got a permit from us, that doesn't mean you're liable for any of that. Um, cause you hired the.
Correct.
Like, yeah, like that's, that is not on the village at all. So, um, he can complain, but he's gotta get this fixed. And he can't just leave plywood up on, I mean, we went over in like August or September and he said he was almost done with them. And he never saw the end. And now he says those little libraries have mold all over them, so he can't use those. He's probably sick because of the mold.
Right.
So I'm concerned and I'm glad that I wrote a letter, but I did have one neighbor contact me and, and ask about it because they were concerned as well. And I did talk to Kurt, to, um, Greg the week before spring break. Um, or like the week I was on spring break, but right before Easter, that week before I was uptown. And, um, he thought, he shared this information with me, but I didn't bring up to him then, like you have to, you can't just leave plywood on the windows. So it's already been up there for about a month, but we're being generous and giving him thirty more days.
And after the thirty days, I think it's important that we.
Give a fine.
Give a fines. So we don't get into a situation like we had before.
Yes. Yes, agreed. Um, cause it, I mean, people are looking at it going, what is going on?
We were like, okay, remember the one, but now the.
The two.
And I don't understand how that helps the mold.
I don't either.
Is there one that's more light next to the first?
There's no air circulation.
So those are my notes. If you need to see any letters, let me know. I did bring copies, I think. I think I did bring copies. Um, moving on, um, trustee Hinkle is excused tonight. Trustee Johnson, do you have anything to report?
No.
Not trustee Rude?
Nothing at this time.
Trustee Stein?
Do I have a couple things?
Yeah.
Um, one is thank you to the village, uh, residents for the second term. Um, yay, thank you. Um, second is something that I'm trying to figure out my brain and I am an offender of this personally. And most of us are, and I don't know what the solution is, but I just, the, um, and I know why. But all of these stakes in everybody's yard.
Linda brought this up last time.
They seem to be multiplying like crazy and I'm looking for suggestions. I, I think, and I, I know why, I know why. I, mine are still out, um, and it's not for the snowplows. It is for the delivery trucks that will put huge ruts. Um, but I'm concerned with some of the materials that are being used.
Linda brought this up too.
Yeah, because I'm afraid my son is clumsy and will poke an eye out. Um, and I'm wondering if there is a more aesthetic way as a village, we can come up with ways to do this. Uh, that is maybe a little more cohesive. Um, I've got four stakes in my yard. I know some stakes seem to have thirty of them in their yards. There's different, you know, sizes, different, it's just, and then there, and there's even more than last month when we talked about this.
There is a lot of stakes on right now and I don't.
And I, I totally know why. It's because the ground is soft. And if you get one delivery truck, you're gonna have a rut, which that's another safety concern too, because I am not the most graceful. If I'm out walking at night and I straight at the side and there's this, I have, you know, my ankles are held together by a dental floss. So if I take a wrong step, I'm gonna turn an ankle a hundred percent and I'll ruin someone's front lawn. So I understand, I totally get why. That's why I do it. Um, but I just feel like there's gotta be something. I don't know, a couple of years ago, it was brought up because a lot of people had boulders in their yards for that reason. But then I remember way before, like one of the first couple of years I lived here, I noticed, you know, from the villagers saying, if you have a boulder in your yard. And some parks on that, and they wrecked their car, that that is on the homeowner because you had something obstructing the way for someone to park and they hit it. I don't know how valid that is. So I don't know, like that might not be the solution. I don't know what the solution to this is, but I think.
Well, one thing we could, we could suggest is, um, plastic stakes only rather than rebar. Did you see the rebar?
I know about the rebar.
Um, there's rebar in somebody's front yard and it, I worry that my dogs are gonna.
Heard that. Yeah, I'm gonna stake it up that much.
Yeah, and then even the, the short stakes, so like they have to be up high enough.
I feel like the short stake are more dangerous than the tall ones.
So I don't know if we put out like a, um, so those are the two year, oh, I cannot.
Like it is, and I don't want to ask what you would have cut an ordinance to say, okay, they have to be, you know, like you can only put five in or, you know, like spaced apart. Or if there's just a way, you know, to, to maintain the park-like atmosphere. Because it's just, I mean, it's, it's bothering me.
Do you think it would help if we put it in the next newsletter or is that too late? Cause I think the next newsletter is June.
Well, I, I'm gonna keep mine out until the ground gets soft or gets hard enough. With that, I don't think, you know, like it's, it's the, it's the spring. So, you know, I get one male truck or one Amazon truck on it and it's gonna be into it on this, you know, it's been a couple of years since the roads have been done. Um, but it's just, I.
So really the, the biggest concern is the short stakes and the rebar. Are there any other concerns or just the amount?
I think it's just the amount, the aesthetic. I mean, if you go down, especially South Elmwood, it's just, and the ruts that are left behind.
Cause there's ruts and people should really fill those.
Right, but I understand, but that's why you put the stakes.
That's why they're putting up the stakes so they're on ruts.
Right. Cause, cause otherwise.
But there's one house, um, on South Elmwood, right on the corner of South Elmwood Old Tree, and they've got like fifteen stakes in a row.
Like a ton, a ton.
It's almost like a little tiny fence. I'm like, why do you have to make it so weird? Like, it's silent zone.
Yeah, I mean, I think I have four, four or five at the most.
So, okay.
So I don't know. It's just.
Linda brought this up at the last meeting and.
And I'm reinforcing it because it's great.
Cause because there's more.
I wonder if we put something, I mean.
I don't know.
One, one hope for one thing that I think would be really helpful is, um, at the RCICC meeting that I attended a couple of weeks ago. Um, we're really trying to get our website updated and I kind of put this in Kendall's lap because she has some experience with this. Um, even like it's just our treasure. Um, but there is, somebody inserted, has someone that they used. And the cool thing about their website is it can also be an app on your phone. So if we did send out a notification about something like this, it would go to everyone. It is something we could post on Facebook. We could reiterate it in the village news letter. Um, we could put it on the website and those might be the things we start with and see how it's, how people react.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know how many people go out to the village. I know when you post things though, if you're signed up on it, it'll vote you. But I, it is a problem in the main circle over here for sure. It's, it's pretty, it's, it's a little ridiculous. And, and the short stakes do make me nervous because they're gonna pop a tire, um, or trip somebody.
Or my face.
Yeah.
Cause I am not.
Well, I want to tell her, yeah, a couple of years ago, right after the roads are gone and I called my wife to come down. He, my, it was bad.
Yeah.
But, but, Kurt, you, do you remember when, I mean, with the roads, wasn't it three feet or an ex amount of feet that we own or the village owns or the roads own that?
Yeah, we do all. Yeah, we do all of that.
Right.
There's, I think from the, it goes from the center line of the road, it's like twelve feet.
Ex amount of feet in.
Yeah, you know.
So really, yeah.
I mean, I know it's a problem. I've gone down South Elmwood. It's a problem.
It's crazy.
It's, it's really bad. I'd say that's probably the worst. North, uh, north, east Elmwood and South Elmwood are probably the worst. Some of them are spaced out totally fine.
I have, I have four in my yard, so I'm not, I'm not throwing shit at any of them.
But I do think that we should just tell people like, please consider the materials you're using. They should not be, you know, three inches apart. They should not be five inches off the ground. Um, and if they're not plastic and that kid is riding their bike and they fall down, they could really hurt themselves.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Well, and, and, and when people drive into the neighborhood fast, I tell my son, you can see a car coming into the grass, which I'm sorry to tell the neighbors if he goes in your grass, but I tell him that, but that's.
If you go on the grass, you might hold it down.
Yeah, I'm gonna be proud of it.
Okay, I think, I think we'll start there with like the website, Facebook and, and I have a general email I could send out. Um, and it'll be the same message, but, yeah, it's, I do, yeah, okay.
I know, um, excuse me, um, I know somebody who had the short ones in their yard. And, um, a child walked by and fell on it and got her high and the homeowner was sued.
Yeah.
So, just so that's.
I don't know why they would put such shorts there. Well, cause they don't wanna look at them.
Yeah, they're trying to make it look nice, but it's looking the same effect.
Yeah, but they're, yeah, I mean, if they're putting up short ones too, that could just be like, you know, I wanted to throw spike strips across the later. I mean, they're thinking, you drive in my yard, guess what? Your tires get popped and too bad for you. So it could be, you know, you know, alter, we don't know. You know, but I mean.
I don't, it's.
It, it, because wasn't there something a few years ago after the whole plow season too, where you had X amount of time removed?
They, they had X amount of time to remove. That was when Mike Hoppus was plowing.
Doing it.
He, he, he had time to pull this thing up.
He was quite a month history.
And we didn't have that issue when he plowed.
But it's even, for me, it's even the plow. The plow is, cause I mean, I'm not a street.
Delivery trucks, delivery trucks.
And the mail. Especially since the roads have been done and it's a little softer and.
Yeah.
It's, but.
Definitely gotten worse.
It's definitely gotten worse.
So, okay.
I've got states in my yard.
Yeah, I, I do.
You know.
Yeah, we got a lot of our agenda, so I'm gonna keep going. Um, trustee Stewie is absent, excused, and trustee, would you care anything to report?
Um, I just had someone, um, question what can sit in the driveway because there's a truck that's been parked in our neighbor's driveway since December. Um, her son had a problem with it. He put it there. He doesn't live there, but now when we got back, we noticed there's no plates on it.
That red one that's there?
Yeah. So it hasn't moved since December.
Can you send the Taria, there is like, I think there is, uh.
Has to be registered.
If you send the address, then we can send them a letter.
Okay. Has to be, correct.
You have to put some records for her.
Yeah, registered and workable.
And driving, and I know it's not, so, and I, I mean, I haven't talked to her yet. She's very nice and that, but I know it's her son's friend who doesn't.
We have a driveway for her.
But this was locked up.
Yeah, I have an amendment to my recording. Sorry, I said nothing. I've heard from a resident that has a real concern about the home on North Elmwood, I believe it is, that has cement in the front yard where the cars can.
Oh, but she's, that's on her report, so she's got some things to talk about.
Okay.
It's on, yeah.
Okay, but they said that in back, there's four cars.
That's, she's gonna talk about it. We're already on it. So she can fill you in on that.
A letter, right.
Okay.
Yeah, lots of stuff there.
Um, okay, so, um, Barb, if you could send an email to myself and Taria.
Okay.
With the address, that would be great. Um, okay, administrative challenge report.
All right, so, um, I am very excited because I was able, um, to get the speed trap. So that's gonna be counted in the next week or two. Actually, just check the email and you responded. So, uh, the sheriff's department's gotta be putting the speed trap right there, like there from Taylor.
The, like the solar.
Yes, yep, and the speed study, you know, it's needed as well to monitor just because it's been so many accidents there. So that is in the works.
Awesome.
So next week, I'm thinking it should be out there.
And it's gonna, where are they gonna put it? Yeah, 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 or?
Yes, way down the Taylor.
Right.
On north side.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So there was another accident there.
I think that's a lot of that. Do you think that's five?
Okay.
Since January?
Yeah, at least, yeah.
I think it's about.
There's back to back ones, right? And then, yeah, and there was just one a couple of weeks ago.
So many.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And you don't count the two that were on Taylor.
Yeah, like I said, there, you know, I mean, any way to do the flash, but the only bad thing is when you've got that house on the corner.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in the south, well, whatever you wanna call it, south east corner, and it needs to be flashing in there. You know, but then the other thing is too, right by the school.
Yes.
You've got the stop sign, but then you've got the line up here. So they kinda stop and all of a sudden they pull it up. You're going, are they gonna stop? They're not gonna stop. I mean, it's, it's, it's ugly.
Yeah, so that's gonna be implemented right away just because, you know, knowing the fatalities or, I mean, it's just scary.
Something.
But you said, so how far it's gonna be in front of the church?
But, yeah, uh, he said on the north side, so, yeah, this side, maybe on this side.
Will it be on, are you wondering, is that a Taylor or is it on Lethra? You would prefer it on Lethra.
Well, I'm just wondering, so is it the big one that they told, like we had a couple of years ago?
Yes, the one like where you drive and it kinda tells you, it's like, where's the.
I mean, I guess my, if they put it that close to a four wheel stop, they're gonna be slowing down already. I mean, there's been cars in the last week doing seventy down Lethra. It's, it's disgusting.
Yeah, maybe I'll just say, if you can do it before the stop sign, like closer to Maryland Avenue. You'll get a better reading than putting it closer to Taylor. Because that's where the accidents are, but it's partially because so many people are speeding down Lethra. From Durand Avenue, like Maryland's kind of in the middle there.
Yeah, that's why the time they gather up, it's.
Yeah, so that would be something.
Yeah, I don't even know.
Yeah.
Um, so we did talk about that three percent increase, um, just cause it's really hard and everything is inflated right now for long-term tenants. Uh, today building five was shown again to like an adult, uh, living facility. And then we have a tentative tenant who wants to go to daycare for another week. So those are two tenants. And then, um, now I talked to the realtor today about other half of the building choosing to kind of prep to get that going. So we don't have to wait too long, but it's a lot of stuff in there and they have a stage and things like that. It's hard to future, but we can start working on that now. Just cause we'll have several vacancies now because of them moving. Um, and then I did talk to Mark Kingston because it's time for the cell tower lease to be renewed. So it's every five years. It's a fifty-year lease, but every five years renewed. So, uh, Mark Kingston is actually working on it right now. And so this come up in the town league as well, because it's something made for us to renew. Uh, we're like in the middle of that cycle, so it's just a formality.
It looks like there are new additions and things added to it and it looks, from what she could see, she's like, I feel like it's almost, you thought it was a hundred and thirty-six percent increase. So I was like, that makes.
It's like a high increase on there.
So we're hoping to get.
They're supposed to report those as they put them up.
And they have been putting, they have been putting more additions on there.
Yes, and so I'm just gonna say, make sure they check the number of additions.
Yeah.
Cause that does make a difference.
Correct.
Okay.
And I was thinking with the three-year increase or the three percent increase, maybe with a new tenant, um, we could offer them, say, okay, if you sign up for a three-year lease. There won't be any increase until possibly the end of your lease term, the three years.
Yeah.
Four or five years. And then at that point, you can say, okay, you know, you've had a chance to establish your business a little bit more.
That's not a bad idea.
And then we can increase it or five years or like with Shelley, ten years.
Cause they right now are like, right, we're doing three percent increase every year.
Yeah, for everyone.
Is that, was that?
The door to the escalator.
Was that a Chris sign here?
Yeah. I don't know if it was earned Chris lawyer. I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay.
That's a great idea, what you said, too.
It gives them an incentive to, you know, to stay in place like Shelley, being there for ten years. That's, that's a real bonus. How long are Stan and Alicia over here in building four?
Yearly.
Yearly, okay.
It was two years, cause she was like, just two years.
Okay. Probably because she's worried about that three percent increase.
You're saying that is a ten, it is a ten-year lease?
It is, but she has to sign it. She still has to sign it every.
Two years.
Two years. So the ten-year lease.
Yeah, yeah, I just wonder if we do something though, you know, cause even a percent, I mean, a couple bucks, just to keep them honest too, because.
Correct.
And then she kinda, we actually got to have a meeting too because she's like, I put forty thousand into the building.
Okay.
Then I'm still getting, he's like.
Okay, okay. I mean, there, yeah, certainly maybe it is a case by case basis, but yeah. You know, we're, I mean, we're still paying more and more taxes on these buildings. I would assume every year too, and they're going up, you know, kinda like my own property. My niece is in there. I'm losing now thirty or forty bucks because of taxes this year. Did I go back to her and say, give me more money? No, it's my fault, but I don't wanna do it to her, but, you know, it's, but there, yeah, she's put money into it too. So I guess a case by case type basis too, so.
Yeah.
And she eventually wants to take over the whole building, but, uh, again, we don't know because she, she's not ready right now. So if something comes up, you will wanna rinse it out.
Cause she really guarded this chapel back there because of how it was.
Yeah.
No.
Something to say.
It should be the problem as well. So it's a lot of work. I did talk to Lou at Siding Unlimited just to kind of see where things are. Um, and he let me know that the project for windows is starting like mid-May, late May, just because of how the windows are being ordered and they're just not ready.
Okay.
So, but that is coming up, so.
I know that Kurt has heard from siding limited. They're coming in to do the final measurement for, for this building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Okay.
That's a good time, and then for everything, all at once, too. And then, uh, the little libraries, we decided to order the little libraries off of Amazon, just 'cause they were like three hundred plus on the little library website. So we can still, like, register with the little libraries if you want, but it's, it looks really good, thank Kurt for putting those together. And then Linda's gonna be painting them, and then they'll be ready to go.
I want to visit you a long time ago.
Yes. Um, and then Florida thirty-four eighteen North Elmwood.
That, this was what Laura's.
That house you mentioned, yes, there's been excessive news, was parked in the alley. And there's excessive people in the house as well, and we're kinda having a hard time locating the owner, you know, um. And he had a lot of addresses and things, so we're just gonna send the notices, someone had replied before to when we sent out, um, information about a flat tire one of those moved. So we're just gonna send notices and just go with the response, um, and that's how little trouble will be coming in better.
I have heard from that resident that he's renting out spaces in there.
And rooms.
But you can't rent out a room with a sleeping bag on the floor or a cot.
Mark Hinkston is also looking into this, but building two kind of took precedence before the meeting, because of everything happening there, that we just, there's so much that we're talking to Mark about right now, with building two and the sewer, the sewer agreement that we're in, and then the cell tower lease, that this did get kind of put back on the back burner, so I just don't have as much information as I would like. I sent Mark a letter, or a message, just stating all my concerns about that house, and I brought up this house, um, when Ernie was president. And Ernie's sister actually came in to vote the day I was in the office, which was just kind of awesome, she moved two doors down, and she gave us a lot of information about that house, um. This is the letter I sent, it has come to our attention that current tenants living at thirty-four eighteen North Elmwood Drive are also using the alley as part of their parking space. The alley is not a parking space for any person living within the village, according to the village ordinance, and there is an ordinance there about the fact that they cannot park in the, in, um, anywhere but in their parking space at the front, or, um, in the driveway at the back, but not on the alley. Um, as you have a single-family dwelling, please have your tenants use the front space in front of the house, as well as a back parking space, only nothing more. Please also remember, there's no parking on those streets from two until six, two AM till six AM. This does not include the parking space in front of your house, which, but would include the alley. If you're not to take, action taken on this, you're liable to a fine from the village, as well as parking ticket from the sheriff's department, and please contact the office. I'm ad-libbing a little bit here, um. I will, the other concern we have is the amount of people that are living in that house, because it is not, it is a single-family, it is not a duplex, it is not a multifamily home, and that is the next step.
Yeah, it's like a revolving door, there's people coming in.
Well, I think it's a halfway house.
Yeah. Block, block.
And, and he has five addresses at the, the renter, and we don't know which one he is at.
And we have somebody there that shouldn't have been there, we don't even know if that person's.
Yeah, so, um, so it's definitely a concern that we have, and it's definitely on our radar, we're just trying to figure out how to, um, get ahold of him to, and, and legally, like, from the village standpoint, there is one woman there that I think takes in all of these people, and we just, we have to, like, do something. So, um, Mark is aware, but there were a lot of other things that took precedence over this at this time, so just, especially building two.
But at least you're aware of it.
Uh-huh.
Maybe the sheriff could be contacted about, hey, just move back there, if there's people who are parking in the alley where they're not supposed to.
I can't, maybe no one has complained that lives over there. The two houses on either side of that house, um, I think are, are older, and some of it, sometimes they're gone from our understanding, um, and they just, they haven't said anything, and I just don't think it's right, so.
It could be that they're, right?
Yes.
Maybe, that could be.
Yeah.
I've been in that house, there, you know, there were a lot of people, I brought that there going.
Oh, that's awesome. So, but if, I mean, do they have to notify, I mean, I guess, I guess, for the notification, is there a reason why the sheriff is not issuing tickets now if they're exceeding the number of cars that are parked back there?
I don't know if the sheriff is noticing it.
Yeah, okay.
So we will be contacting the sheriff as well, but the first step was, we got this letter out, I think, today.
I think they did, because that might.
We have, we have five addresses, right, one of which is in Georgia.
Or I think when the sheriff sort of, they go through the main streets, they may not know there's an alley back there, but you might not know you can't park.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll be in contact with them. Um, I'm gonna keep going, because we have a lot on the agenda, and we have just gotten through the, uh, reports. So, um, treasurer's report, Kendall, is there anything you would like to report?
No, not this.
Is there, was there anything, were you done?
Oh. I just have more.
That's okay, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the Easter egg hunt went really good, so, um, we were really excited, it was a nice turnout, um, it was like perfect. So it didn't like exceed, and it wasn't like less people than we expected, so it was nice to see families, and hopefully we do an extra, add some things, and maybe a little bigger, so.
It was cute, no? Perfect, my turn. Um, okay, old business, discussion and possible decision about purchasing and installing speed humps in village to reduce speeding in residential areas. Um, before we begin, at the last meeting when we talked about this, Tom Mills did contact me afterwards and said, um, people were not, they looked at this a while ago, and according, now, we had a different village attorney, because John Newton was alive at that time, and he thought that the village could be liable if there's damage to cars. Mark Hinkston has looked into it and said, we'd have to post signs if there was a speed hump, um, but we would, he does not believe we'd be liable if there was any damage to cars. Um, I do know I got another person, um, that said they would not like it on the, the larger side, which I don't think we should put it there anyways. Um, the only place we're looking at putting a speed hump is in between Taylor and Lathrop on Maryland Avenue. Did you have a chance to talk to anybody?
Just a few that I talked to in the beginning, and, you know, except for Maryland, a couple for it, but like you said, a lot of people are against it, just for aesthetic purposes too, and, and then we put up a sign, and it's, you know, someone's gonna complain about that, because it's in their yard, and.
I don't know if there's as much speeding that's happening in between Taylor and Lathrop, um, but if you think that there doesn't need to be.
I don't see, I mean.
Yeah, you live over there.
You remember, we lived on Washington Avenue, so this is slow.
Compared to it, okay.
But I don't put that, and I guess it depends, if they're cutting through, that's one, but because a wheel-on doorway comes off, that slows people down, but that, maybe that's just a wheel-on.
Yeah, you're right, it slows them down at the stop sign, it doesn't stop them, but it slows them down.
Exactly.
True.
I know it's going down there.
I know a lot of people over here that were not for it, the only, only place I would suggest, Maryland, but if we are, if it's just a dead issue in the water, then we can just move on, does anybody, we, does anybody want to say anything, do we want that?
So people on Lathrop don't want it?
No, we can't put it on Lathrop.
That's a highway.
We're talking about, we're, we're, um, the people in the North Elmwood, East Elmwood, South Elmwood, no one wants a speed hump over there.
Oh, so it can't be on Taylor or Lathrop?
Correct.
Oh, I, well, then, yeah.
No point.
I don't think so, I mean.
I wonder if they should put a stop sign on Lathrop and Maryland. Stop from Durand Avenue, stop, and then get to the next four-way stop, and maybe, I mean, I sure there, it's like, stop, like, right there.
It's just, well, I wonder was that a couple years ago, when someone was turning left on the Maryland, coming south, and then the house two, was that, what's his name, used to be on the ward? Was it Brian, or Ha, Ha, or Ha?
McCos.
Yeah, he's got that little tree right there, and someone came on the right side, because you could almost pass right there, almost went on their phone, and all of a sudden went, oh, oh, and they ran right into the tree. Yeah, it's, it's, yes, yeah.
The second.
No, but I don't want people to stop right there either.
No.
The second phase of the road is gonna include Maryland, so maybe at this point, we can just kind of say, let's just wait a little bit.
Yeah. But he was so brought up with Senator Jones and looking into it.
And most people said no.
Yeah.
Listen to the people, there you go, the nosebeats, okay, we're, that's good, okay. So, uh, at this time, we will not be putting any speed humps. Um, next order of business, possible approval of resolution twenty-two forty dash oh-two, a resolution approving the state trust fund loan in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the fair improvements to the village and municipal buildings. This was from our last meal, meeting, um, obviously, in which we talked about all the things that we wanted to replace and, um, for upkeep of these buildings. Does anybody wanna discuss anything, or share anything, or can we just get into the approval mode?
I think we discussed.
Okay, so can I have a, can someone make a motion, please? To approve the resolution twenty-two forty dash oh-two.
I will make a motion, uh, to approve resolution two, uh, twenty-two forty dash oh-two, a resolution approving the state trust fund loan in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the repairs and improvements to the village municipal buildings.
And can I have a second?
I'll start cutting.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
We will.
Oh, yes, I, well, we can, we can do a roll call, that's fine.
You can.
Uh, what if I?
Yes or I?
Johnson, I.
It's time, I.
Okay. Eyes have it so fast. All right, next order of business, um, discussion about amended village ordinance six point zero seven, five, um, five language regarding tree stumps. Um, our current ordinance reads, um, cut tree, cut tree slash stump removal. Any person cutting out a tree for any reason should require to remove the tree and stump to below the ground level. Um, as you know, we had trouble with a resident recently that was upset about this, um, and we thought we need to make it a little bit clearer, um, by putting in a date, is it, this what you're thinking, Lauren, we've kind of talked about this?
We've talked about not cutting a tree, a tree being felt for any reason, so even if it's not found during a storm or somebody cuts it down, um, but I think for any reason, I think you wanna have that tree removed below grade.
Do we need to make a note that this is in effect of anything after two thousand and eighteen?
Well, we have that, um, I think Kendall took that note last time, that, that was a, something that came in, it was amended in that. And we don't have, actually have that date right here, but I can get it to you, as to when that was approved.
I feel like we need to put that in next to this one, so people aren't saying, well, they have their tree stumped, and their tree has been there for thirty years.
Right.
Um, felt for any reason, um, we cannot, just because we're gonna have to write it, we're just discussing, we're not approving, um, but that'll be in May. So felt for any reason, um, you know, nature. Et cetera.
It was uncertain time period?
Um, yes, I think that's also within.
Sixty days?
Sixty days, sometimes it takes a long time for trees to leave them up. Um, okay, anything else about that?
Oh, do we want, um, sixty days or have a contract signed to have it? I think that's a good idea.
Oh, yes, just in case, you know, it's like sixty-two days, I mean, or, or, you know, it takes three months to get somebody to take down a tree, which from what I hear, it does.
Okay.
Then at least, you, you just have to prove that you guys have subscribed to, to everything, that's, that's sufficient.
Okay, anything else? Wonderful, nice, it's great. Um, okay, so at the next board meeting, we will come up with new language, and then we can hopefully approve that, um, new ordinance. All right, new business, we have new business, um, possible approval of resolution, resolution twenty-two forty dash zero-one, a resolution supporting the credentialing of Shepherd's College to allow access to Pell Grants and federal work study opportunities. So in your packet, you'll see a letter, um, this comes from, no, this is on there. This comes from the RCICC meetings, um, yeah, I've got it in here too. And when I go to these RCICC meetings, um, she went to my place the last time, because I had surgery, and there was a change in position of the person who is basically the secretary for these meetings, um, he no longer is a part of these meetings, so I feel like it kind of got, it fell off, like, we did not get, I didn't even give an invitation to the, the most recent meeting, because they now hired a new person. Um, so I was hearing about this, and we got basically this letter, and they are asking for, um, us to sign to help Shepherd's College get federal funding and Pell Grants, because they right now are, um, against giving any of these people at this college any of that, and they're disabled people. I have no problem signing it, but I would like to know if the board will pay back.
And Shepherd's College and Union Grove, that's like, who's gonna bear down there? And that is for full secondary education.
Yes, so if you look at the letter, um.
That is not fun to me, they're about full.
It's in, Kendall attached it to your packet, it should be in your packet.
It's just a resolution. All the lodges are here, moving this.
Oh, and I have copies, I have copies of it. The one to Brian Steele?
Yeah, eight-nine, or that, yeah. Did you say? Oh, yeah.
Okay, see it? I, I print it, so it's just one of these kind of paper, because that's what was in the paper.
I would agree with that, I mean, I think as a learning institution, they have every right to have type of funds or state funds, just like.
Kind of disappointing, but they don't.
And they had it at one time, they took it away, right?
I am unsure, because that was the first time I heard of it, and everybody at the meetings said, didn't we already pass this? So, but there was this transition of power, of like, somebody that was supposed to be sending it out, which is why I was like, I've never seen this before. Um, because you brought this back, but you didn't, I, I didn't see anything about either of these things, you brought that cyber consortium back. So Travis is a great, he's doing a great job that we're hiring, so.
So this is something that all the municipalities are?
Yes, so at the RCICC meetings, this is all municipalities, all, Mount Pleasant there, Windpoint, North Bay, um, it's a great, it's always, Norway's out there, Servant, Union Grove, um, Caledonia, we all come together, share what's going on in our own municipality. Um, I'm hoping to host one here at some point, um, I can't host the next one, because I'll be in DC, and she'll go with my place, but I feel like I should probably be present, present if we're hosting it here, but they do a really nice job of just sharing information, and it's a great way, like, um, one concern was Airbnb's and, um, people putting up Airbnb's and, and getting money, and so everybody's been talking about, how can we make sure that if there is an Airbnb, that we're getting some, some money from that, because you should be getting some money if somebody's renting out their house for an Airbnb. Um, we're much smaller, but that's a big problem, even in North Bay, there's actually quite a few Airbnb's, because they're so close to the lake. Um, so, and it just ma, it makes for a really good conversation, I try, if I can't make the meeting, then I send Latiria, because I really, um, think it's important that we're always there. There are some people that never come, and really one person in particular, and I won't tell you who it is, you can ask me later. Um, and it's a disappointment that they're not there, because it's one of the bigger municipalities, but, um.
So they're trying to stop this conversation, what's the deal with money Airbnb, why, why are they feeling that they should be?
Because when, um, they, there is something on Airbnb that if you're renting out, then you, um, you get some sort of tax that you can give back to where you're living. So, yeah, it's not a ton, but it is a little bit, yeah.
My house is not paying it back, so it's, like.
Is there a timeline for when we should have this in, this approval?
Um, I think we are supposed to be as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I think they, they wanted it by then, but we didn't, we just support, so I, there was nothing I could do, so we'll send it over to them and let them know.
Okay.
Um, so is everybody in favor, I've gotta go through, um, is there any questions about the Shepherd's College one? I guess first I'll say, can we approve a resolution twenty-two forty dash zero-one? Can I be first?
I'll do it. Um, had, um, a motion, a motion to, uh, the approval of resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh-one, a resolution supporting the credentialing of Shepherd's College to allow access to Pell Grants and federal work study opportunities.
Can I have a second?
Second.
First by John, first by Stein, second by Johnson, um, is there a discussion, a lot of you think, any concerns? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Okay, eyes have it so fast, so yes, if we can get that to them right away, that's good. Um, okay, next order of business, um, a lot of stuff, guys, sorry, we have a long, long agenda. Um, there is some unfinished road work around the sewer rates on Oak Tree Lane, and this was brought up again before my time, this actually came to Chris, and then it just never, nothing ever happened, um, and I don't know what the deal is. Kurt, um, did you guys, you got all these, these pictures, and you can see these in your packet? Correct. Um, I don't know why I said your name, Kurt, just ignore me. So, this is from John Wildon, who's very concerned about the grates, I know there's a grate near our. I know there's a grate near our house, and I know the roads are kind of dipped down, but I, I wonder if we need to, um, if we need to reach out back to the road company that did this to see if there's anything that they can do to fix this situation.
And not charge us to come back and fix their work?
Correct.
I think it might have a little bit more punch if it came from Mark Hinkston.
Okay.
And just kind of, you know, per the contract that you've dealt with, this is not supposed to be.
We're using Marsha. Yeah, there's just, um, so if you notice, um, somebody fell into the hole and damaged her extremities. Um, imagine walking in the dark, especially now, we have no streetlights, because the streetlights were, were in bad shape. Um, this grate in front of the Chiquini home had this still in it, you could not, I think, did John?
They could, they can't lift them.
Yeah.
Two guys tried it, they couldn't even budge it.
So, there's just a lot of trouble over here, and I feel like it was just forgotten, much like the orange barrel by the Hickles' house was forgotten, and nothing was ever fixed until I became president, I hate to toot my own horn, I don't like to do that, but nothing was ever done. It just kind of fell off the radar, oh, it's fine, and I finally got that orange barrel over there. So, I would like to make this a priority in the next month, to see if somebody can come up and take a look and fix that up.
Well, maybe check all the grates in the village.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know this is over by, yeah, Elm, or Oak Tree again, um, South Elmwood, but you have to check all the, just to make sure that they're done right.
This was sent back in, um, '21.
Yeah, I love that. Do we, is there anything, have we paid all these bills already? Okay, so there's really no, you know, monetary leverage that we have, but I think if it came from Mark, just kind of like, okay, we're kind of looking at you for not fulfilling your duties here.
Yeah, and I think Kapoor was who, who did the roads for us, right, or was that just the engineer?
That's just the engineer.
Who was the?
Ashbald.
Was it Ashbald?
Yeah, Ashbald, was it Ashbald? Okay. All right, so, um, that'll be, hopefully by May, I'll have some sort of idea if they, what, what's going on there. Um, does anybody have anything else they would like to add to this, or any concerns, anything else?
Do you think maybe you want to get a letter to, to Mr. Wildon, and just tell him that this?
Yes, we will, we'll be contacting him, and I'm also contacting, I cannot remember their name. Marsha on the corner of. Russell's, thank you, Russell's. She called me and said, have you been looking at these? I think I saw something on the agenda, I'm just wondering if you're looking at all of them, and so I'll call her back, um, because she may also have concerns, so I'll talk to, um, yeah. I always forget her name. Okay, if there's nothing else, then, um, you can move that on, but just know that that's in our copper at the moment.
Is that Marsha?
Marsha Russell. She lives at a different address, it's just, um, she called me about the, where the road, where the water main drove, that's right by her house, and she called me about that, and then asked, she saw it on the agenda, so she just wondered. Okay, moving right along, um, our next order of business, I can't put my packet straight. Discussion approval bid for complex furnace replacements. Um, I'm gonna ask, and Kurt, well, I guess I'll do the, the other one second. So, the furnace replacements, Kurt, would you like to share anything about, you have the furnace, the furnace replacement bids in front of you, there's one from Keystone, one from First Call, and one from Building Waters. Keystone is for $16,760. First Call is for $19,300, and these are all for four furnaces, correct? And Building Waters is for $20,605. Kurt, is there anything you want to share about these bids that you noticed?
We've had Keystone and First Call both in here. And then, I like what I see, I, I'd go with the lowest bid, and I mean.
Is there any warranty difference on the other ones?
Here's ten-year, five-years, but.
The rebate.
This is ten-year, five-three.
There's a rebate on that one?
Um, with the energy.
Oh, okay, so we get a rebate on any of these?
I think it depends on the efficiency.
Yep, it sort of depends on looking at it, it says 95%, so, yeah. And it would for sure First Call would, because they, they mob five percent.
Okay.
It says that Keystone also has a 95%.
Yeah, that's what she said. And they have one-year parts, one la, one-year labor. I've got, I only got three years, because I can't read anything lately. First Call is ten-year parts, three-year labor warranty. Uh, warranty from Keystone is also a ten-year heat exchanger. Not quite, not as.
Not as, but it's.
Ooh, these readers are really nice. So, I have contacts on, in.
Do, you know?
Like, I can't see for anything lately, um.
Just the one-year labor, current opinion versus three-year for quarter-end difference?
You know, one-year labor is not gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah. Probably not three either, so, yeah.
No, I mean.
So, it's kind of a wash?
I think it's a wash, you know, I think you just go with the lowest bid, I, I like, I like two of the, I, First Call and, and, and Keystone, I like them guys a lot, I have not dealt with.
Building Waters?
Building Waters, only reason I got them, just get a third bid.
They're pretty good, I mean, I, home-wise, I, yeah, I know.
He was really pushy from his standpoint, but that shouldn't matter, I mean, all three of them got different furnaces.
Yeah.
All, you know, we're. He was pushing from Building Water, he's, he was kind of pushing hard for, by being a man on furnace, for another $4,000, but it's a lifetime guarantee replacement. If you bought the original, but it's like fifteen, twenty years from now, nobody's, nobody in this room's gonna be around remembering that lifetime guarantee.
Um, I would find a point, Keystone, yeah, Building Waters also has a two-stage furnace, so that's, that's a whole different system. Yes.
I just say go with the lowest bid, that's, that's me.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a, I mean, I.
All right, do you feel good about?
Say a couple grand, it's a couple grand.
Yeah. Twenty thousand for that, or twenty-five, they think it was twenty, yeah.
So, this is. Kelly, do you remember how much we budgeted for the?
I think it was specifically.
It was twenty, yeah.
It was twenty? Okay, all right, so let's say it was twenty, get it, because you go. Um, okay, so.
Or, or, or salt.
I would like an approval of the, um, complex furnace replacements, can I get a first?
I moved to Keystone Heating and Air Conditioning for the replacement of four REEM, one, or ten, $100,000 BTU furnaces for buildings, building four, is that the only one?
Um, two in building two, one in building four, and one in building five.
Okay. And a second? Discussion, would you like to do a roll call, or are we all in favor? Okay. All in favor, move this high. Opposed? Eyes have it, so pass. Um, before we get to the next one, there is an amendment, as I said at the beginning, there is another, um, there is another bid for painting, um, we are looking at, for painting, um, for the Elmwood Windows Project. If you could look at those three bids, we have one from Poscarino, and for $18,583, and one from BMB Paintings, in the amount of $7,200, or $7,300. Uh, oh, no, and one from Mastin Painting, for $7,300. Um, so take a look at these three bids. Kurt, is there anything you want to share?
No, I mean, I, obviously, Poscarino's way out of line, but, you know.
I mean, is that, if, if, am I missing something here that, like?
Very quickly.
But what I understand.
Gold.
Is that they're more in the commercial work.
Yeah.
You know, heavy-duty commercial work, and they just threw a number on it, see if it sticks.
Okay, these bids are so close, is there, either of them, have you worked with either of them?
I have not worked with either one of them, they're both nice guys, I felt very comfortable with either one of them. You know, but the coin, I mean. I think the.
I like the look of BMBs, it looks a little bit more professional.
Yeah.
The other, because I only got a screenshot from Kurt, so I just wrote it down on the paper.
Did it look professional?
Yeah, it was, it was an choice.
And Mastin's been a little long.
But it should go with the lower bid, lowest bid, right?
Some need to waters, okay.
Our ordinance states we should go with the lowest bid.
Always, yeah, agreed. All right, does anybody have anything to add, or can I have a, um, can someone make a motion?
Can I make a motion to, um, BMB Painting for the painting estimate that we received, $7,200?
And a second?
Second.
First by Trustee Wittick, second by Trustee Johnson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, so pass. And finally, wait, I had something else I wanted to say. Oh, just so you're aware, we did find, we, I did find, Kurt and I worked together and found, um, we are, we did go with a cement for the slab out front, um, and it was under $5,000, so I just approved it with Kurt.
For the two foot.
Yeah, so that is being taken care of and done.
May.
Yeah, so it should be done before it turns on Taylor, which is great. So. I bring them over, put your hands in it, just kidding, don't, don't do that, don't do it! Only me, I'm the president, I am. Hold on. I play my advocate, I just got it, it was just so fun!
And now he said you better. Now he said you better not.
Chris will probably go over here and do that. I want to leave my mark a little more. Um, okay, finally, resolution for, um, accounts payable, I got it. Can I make a motion, can someone make a motion to approve accounts payable?
I will make a motion to approve accounts payable.
Second?
Second.
First by Stein, second by Trustee Wittick. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, eyes have it, so pass. Okay, all right, we're good. And the meeting is adjourned at 7:59.